All together. All right, we'll call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education to Community High School District 128 for Monday, August 24th to order. We did a pledge earlier this evening, so I'll just ask for a roll call.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Pat Groody.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Karen Lundstead.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Okay, everybody is present, and before we get started, I'm also gonna take this opportunity, actually, it's in the president's report, so I'll wait for it. All right, everybody's here. I'll open it up for public comment. Mary, I believe there are a few comments for tonight's meeting. Actually, hold on one second. Let me go through the agenda, I apologize. We'll open it up for public comment, brief president's report, superintendent's report has a number of items on it, including school reopening, capital projects updates, we'll approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed two weeks ago, brief updates from program and personnel and facilities and finance. Anything on CEDOL? Where do I see Karen?
No.
Nothing, thanks Karen. And Jim, anything on ISB?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay, all right, so that'll be it, and then we will adjourn. All right, so now I'll open it up for public comment. Thanks, Mary.
Okay, the first comment that we have is from a writer who wishes their name to be withheld. And her comment is, "Really? You are going to allow in-person classes for adults but not for kids? They are the ones in, they are the ones that need in-person learning the most. This district has gone nuts. If I could sell my house and move to another district, I would. Sadly, since we don't have in-person learning for kids, it is impossible to sell a house in this district." The second comment comes from Ian Kazian. "I would like to ask if the school district has created or is creating a task force to work on a framework for return to in-person learning. It would seem if the board is waiting for direction from the state, we may be waiting for a long time. Since there appears to be a lack of guidance on clear metrics for school boards to approve any type of in-person schooling, is the board looking to adopt other guidelines such as the ones presented by the Northern Illinois Public Health Consortium on August 14? Is the district continuing to pursue procurement of the required ITAV equipment to provide the equitable live streaming learning environment as described in the July meeting? Overall, my question is, what is the board's formal plan or action to advance into the hybrid and hopefully in-person schooling in the future?" And that's it.
Okay, can I ask one question if somebody, I don't know if somebody has the answer. How many people on a typical evening would be in person in our continuing education programs?
Pat, I don't have a raw number, a total number, but the groups will be very small, as you know, and I'll discuss in my school opening report, where we've already brought smaller groups of students in, we've got kids in athletics, we've got, so they'll be in very small groups, and they'll be following appropriate protocol in community education, so we have no concerns with that.
But, but print its order of magnitude, is it a couple dozen people on any given time, do you think, roughly? I don't know, I have no concept of this, I just wanna, I mean, I want to make it clear to the public, the decision not to go, go open schools was, in some part anyway, based on the fact that we were, we were very concerned about the situation having upwards of a thousand or more people in the building at any one time. That's very different situation, I think, than what we have on any given night on the continuing education, correct?
It's correct, very.
Okay, so that anybody that thinks that we're valuing our continuation, our continuing education programs over our student education programs, I just want to state for the record that would be categorically incorrect. And it's not, it's not really a fair assessment of what went into making the decision, okay? And second to the other one, Mary, there's more points on there than I can address, but I would say we have not finalized our, our return to school plans, we continue to work on those efforts, we're gonna include all, all, all data inputs in making that decision. Stay tuned, I think we'll be providing more information as those plans develop, okay? Not the least of which, we want to see how school openings are going in places where that's happened. It certainly hasn't gone well in most of the college campuses, I think that is now a fact. So, you know, we'll see. Okay? All right. President's report, all right, so tonight's, and I want to welcome, we have a number of new faces on our meeting tonight, and I'm gonna try to introduce, I'll call you out, and then you can speak up, since none of us know who you are, although I guess we can see, see your name and your picture, but Amal Hassan?
Hello, I'm Amal.
Amal, I'm Amal, Amal, when we, when I call your name, why don't you just tell us which school you're at? I know you're at LHS, and what year you're in, unless you guys are all, are you all seniors?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So you have the unprecedented, I'll call it position to be in a year like no other. You're, you're groundbreaking, record breakers. All right, so here, I'm gonna, I'll go put you on the spot really quickly, then, I'd like you to make one comment about your first day back. Go ahead, Amal, we'll start with you.
But, Pat, I think that's gonna be part of their report out tonight.
Okay, we can do it there. All right, that's fine, we'll do that. Okay, Quinn Curland, is that right?
Yeah, you said it right.
Okay, hi Quinn. Okay, great, welcome. Marilyn, you? There's Marilyn. All right, Marilyn, also a senior at LHS, and let's see, Diego Corales Lucay, is that right?
I just go by Diego Corales, good evening.
Diego Corales, okay.
Vernon Hills.
Okay, great, welcome Diego. Eva Atu, is that right?
Hi, it's O2.
O2, okay, great, welcome Eva. And is it Kayla Rubin?
Hi, I'm Kayla, I go to Vernon Hills High School.
Hi Kayla, all right, welcome to all you guys, we were just thrilled to death to have you, and we're gonna really, really, really look forward, we always look forward to the student input, but never more so than now, I think your input's really valuable to us, so thank you so much for being here. Okay, otherwise, listen, I just want to say thanks to everybody, I know we've received some emails on a lot of the preparations that have been done over the last couple of weeks, getting ready for the virtual opening. I just want to say thanks to everybody that was involved in that, all of, everybody in the administration, all of the teachers, all the supporting staff, I can only imagine what it's been like to get this together, I was extremely expired, inspired by some of the feedback we got on the preparation sessions, and you know, again, just thanks so much for all the very, very hard work to pull it off, it sounds like people are very engaged and very motivated. I'm excited to hear more about our opening today, so with that, I'm gonna pass it to Dr. Lee for his superintendent's report.
Pat, do we want to do the board reps first?
We can.
Want to have them report out?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, let's do that.
So why don't you all take a turn, I know you've, you've probably networked with each other a little bit, and then maybe we can go LHS and then VHHS and just talk about kind of the run-up to the start of the school and your first day today, and anything else you want to talk about?
Okay, I'll start. So, although today mostly included the syllabus and icebreaker activities, I took the
I think we lost Amal. Amal, can you hear us? I think we lost you, your video, your audio.
Should I start over?
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
It's okay.
Okay, three, two. Although today mostly included the syllabus and icebreaker activities, I took the time today to reach out to many students asking about their e-school experience. Here are what many enjoyed about e-school. They enjoyed the long break given to them so that they can step back from their computers and like eat something, or just take a break from screen time. They also liked the designated idea of office hours so that they have the option to meet with the teacher and not feel like it's forced. And a student loved how their teacher that day taught for a specific number of minutes, then gave them 15-minute individual work time that allowed them to turn their cameras off and just do the work that was given to them, and then after they would come back together and discuss their answers. That was most benefit, like everyone who's come out of that class today said that that was most beneficial and felt like the most normal to them. So the concerns about e-school that I've mainly heard, the biggest one is a focusing issue. Some students felt as though they lost focus in the middle of the Zoom, Zoom call, and by fourth period, which is the last period of, of like the block schedule, they all felt burnt out, so they didn't pay attention that period. They felt as though there needs to be more of a stimulus aspect to wake them up and to actually do something. And they felt like teachers were too broad with directions and that they needed to be more specific with what they wanted, so that there is less room for confusion and interpretation. They hope that in the upcoming weeks, weeks, teachers become more organized and use activities that are beneficial rather than time fillers. So my personal thoughts is, e-school today went better than I was expecting, but I'm still hoping this week is more about teachers learning about their students so that they can understand their personality and develop that teacher-student connection. And I, well, today I was scared to participate because when I tried to, for example, I was spoken over and my answer wasn't acknowledged, so that's what a lot of students do feel like, that participation being lower, lower than normal because of the anxiety of maybe like, for example, like cutting off, or just like the awkwardness of speaking in front of virtual classrooms that you've never spoken in front of before.
Okay, great, good. Good feedback, thank you.
Yeah, I can talk about my day a little bit, so like Amal talked about, what worked really well for me was a blocked-out time for us to work by ourselves, where the teachers would say, "All right, guys, you have 15 minutes to read these couple of pages, why don't you go ahead, turn off your mics, turn off your cameras, and then we'll regroup," and I thought that was really beneficial, just because I could kind of work at my own pace for a little bit and kind of get acclimated. And then one concern I had was, in gym, they're really pushing for getting outside and being active, which I really support, and I think it's really important. But they wanted to block off the time during the period where you have to do your physical activity, and I like to jog and run in the mornings, and they said that, like, didn't jive with the schedule and that they prefer if we ran or, you know, exercised during the time of gym, so just something to think about.
Okay. Mara, let's see, Marilyn.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
My thoughts on e-school today, I agree with them all in that I feel like students are more hesitant to raise their hands in class because they're afraid of either their audio not connecting, or just like the awkwardness, like, of just talking randomly. And I think that one positive was the Zoom breakout rooms, because although awkward at first, they allow you to connect with smaller groups of students, and they allow you to talk, kind of, not like you would in class, because a lot of students are just scared to talk in class, so I think that was a positive.
Okay, very good, thanks for your feedback. Vernon Hills.
To start off, I thought my first day of school was pretty successful. I had subtle connection issues, and my teachers were quick to communicate with us to let us know if we were using Google Meet or Zoom. I was able to follow the schedule and make it to all my classes on time, and I thought my teachers did a great job utilizing Zoom to communicate with us and Google Classroom to release information and material. Shout out to my AP Psych teacher, Mr. Mann, for incorporating fun Zoom activities. To continue, last week, Vernon Hills had a freshman orientation, which was a two-day, four-session event, four sessions were incorporated in order for students to remain socially distanced. Each session started off with freshmen heading to an assigned classroom where they met their orientation leaders, the leaders then went over material given to the freshman class, such as available resources and how to access them, policies and guidelines, and told them about what to expect from school culture. Leaders highlighted and explained that new e-school schedule and how Zoom classes would work. They graciously answered any of the freshmen had to ask, all by striving to emphasize what makes Vernon Hills High School Vernon Hills High School. To continue the day, the freshmen were taken to the auditorium for presentation by Dr. G and Dr. Young. After this presentation, they were taken on tour, received their textbooks, took their yearbook photo, and had an informal discussion with their counselor. Freshman Garrett Rubin even said that he felt very informed. During the past week, Vernon Hills High School also gave students the opportunity to take their yearbook photos and pick up textbooks. Student groups were divided by last name, and each section had a specific time period to come to school. Welcoming students safely back into the building required Vernon Hills to take several safety precautions in order to follow social distancing guidelines and safety protocols. Upon walking into the building, there's a camera that takes your temperature and staff members who are there to monitor. In order to enter, you must be wearing a mask and only take it off to take your yearbook photo. For their lines, arrows, and X's, demonstrating which direction to move in and where to stand in order to remain socially distanced. Overall, many students said they felt safe and cared for by Vernon Hills High School. Various school staff said that they're glad to have students back into the building and that it'll see everyone's face. The VHHS, LST, and cafeteria team continues to provide lunches to students in need. Even though our cafeteria is still under construction, Chef Bina goes to LHS to prepare the food. Our LST staff delivers the meals for families that cannot get to school to pick it up. The school is still accepting donations from the community for supplies and food for our most challenged families. Please bring food and supplies and drop them off at door two, number two. A special shout-out of appreciation goes to sophomore Jaden Rush. Jaden and her family brought bags of new school supplies that are intended for families in need. The LST will be giving these out to Vernon Hills High School families in the coming days. And a special thanks to our driver's ed teachers, Mr. Atwell, Mr. Compton, Mr. Morello, and Mr. DeLuca. Last spring, they were unable to get student driving time to finish the behind-the-wheel portion of driver's ed. This summer, they gave up their personal time to develop and implement a plan that got almost all the students they needed hours. This semester is seeing an faulty in driver's ed, because we are all remote, practice driving in the cars unless the teachers are willing to come in and drive with students. All our teachers are ready and willing, and they will start bringing students to school to drive as soon as driver's permits are secured. To continue to athletics, sports teams are seeing different participation rates this year. For example, our cross-country team is down a bit in participation numbers from what school officials have heard. Several athletes have decided not to participate due
We can't hear you, Eva, I don't know if that's the case for everyone else.
That's true.
Kayla or Diego, why don't you? Oh, there's Eva.
Can you hear me?
We can now.
Yeah, Eva, go back to your, after cross-country, you cut out.
Okay, perfect. All right, so sports teams are seeing different participation rates this year. For example, our cross-country team is down a bit in participation numbers. From what school officials have heard, several athletes have decided not to participate due to fear of COVID infections. On the other hand, tennis has seen a spike in the number of girls trying out. In what is normally a cut sport, Coach Gerber has decided to give all athletes a spot on the team so that as many as possible can benefit from getting outside, being a member of a team, and competing against area schools. Head soccer coach, Mr. McCallu, reports that he and his boys' teams are devastated that the season has been temporarily canceled. While they are pleased that the season has been moved to spring, they had been preparing for a successful fall. Coach was excited to report that many of his players have decided to run on the cross-country team instead to keep in shape during this offseason. Coach McCallu points out that these players may be the first four-sport athletes Vernon Hills High School has ever had. Busing at Vernon Hills High School has begun. We have surveyed our families, and there are roughly a dozen current athletes that need rides to school to and from practices. School administrators have worked with our bus company to develop routes for these students. Suses for drivers and students who need rides will begin next week.
Great, thank you Eva.
And I'm just gonna pick up where she left off with some overall info from the IHSA. So the season length, I'm sure as everyone's already been informed on, is August 10th to October 24th for this fall. IHSA bylaws will not be barring schools who will be in remote learning from being involved in IHSA sports, which doesn't necessarily affect us. And an extension has been laid out for allowing an additional 20 contact days for sports set in winter, spring, or summer, so that gives them extra prep times to be more competitive with their seasons. And these extra 20 contact days are gonna be pretty flexible between September 7th and October 31st. But they have to be, and they're gonna be really strict in enforcing the fact that they're gonna be following the Illinois Department of Health and Public, or the Illinois Department of Public Health regulations regarding those 20 contact days. Now, jumping worse in detail into the sports, girls tennis. The team started off strong, they tied a tough Grayslake Central team on Thursday, and then beat Wakana 7-0 the next day. This week, Caesar Coopers played four matches in four days, which should be brutal. Girls swim and dive, this year, the girls swim, the girls swim team had a lot of freshmen who came to try out, and many returning swimmers. Vernon Hills swimmers are currently training at that Libertyville facility due to the construction at VH. During swim practice, there are two swimmers per lane, and they start on opposite ends of the pool, so there's only interaction when they swim past each other. And swim meets are also going to be held virtually. Each school swims their own pool, and each swimmer is timed. Senior Naomi Hernandez said that swimming is still fun, but obviously isn't the same since everyone is separated and split up. Specifically about cross-country, I reached out to the coach, Adam Lukin, head coach, and he's also a top dog for computer science instruction at Vernon Hills. He told me a lot of good things, he's noticed great, and that's even including the change in numbers that Eva mentioned. He said he's noticed a great change in tone compared to other seasons in terms of gratitude. His athletes are just happy to have a season and be able to participate in their sports. He specifically mentioned that attendance for training is early at 6:30 a.m. has been stellar, and there have been zero complaints, and that's coming from cross-country runners who voluntarily run over 100 miles a summer. Lukin also says that they're making small changes across country traditions, such as changing ultimate frisbee on Thursdays and replacing them with fast bike races. I'm sure other sports are doing similar things as well within their team culture, which is really good to see. He also wanted me to specifically shout out his dedicated captains, Oscar Jedanak, Ian Joe, Michael Lee, and Alex Yutsas, who I know for a fact are all very, very strong runners. Now, in terms of golf, a final sport we're gonna be talking about. The golf, the girls golf team's first tournament of the season was the Libertyville High School Invite. Vernon Hills had the best team score since 2017 with a 353. Golfers Lexi won six tournaments with an even par round of 71, Anna 84, Mira 90, and Nitya 108. The girls golf team's experience of surgeon numbers is mentioned already, and many players who came to try out. During practice, all players are required to wear masks, and all players practice together unless varsity has a tournament. Senior JD Gilard said that overall, everyone is excited that golf will be having a season, because it's one of the few sports that can. And moving on more specifically to clubs, I'm gonna be talking about Future Business Leaders of America and JSA, two clubs I have experience with, and I think are Titan clubs at our school. As you recall, FBLA ran their senior competition, or their state competition virtually this year, and a number of students chose to participate despite the switch to virtual and qualified and moved on to nationals. FBLA reconstructed their usual national leader conference into a virtual national leadership experience, and our qualifiers moved on to compete there. And we just received notification of those results, which can be viewed in this document if anyone's interested, which is actually documented, I'm looking at right now, just a bunch of kids from our school placed highly, I see everything above ninth place, and a few top five and top two places as well. Now, I also specifically reached out to our FBLA executive board to see what they were gonna be doing for this fall. FBLA President Eric Song and Vice President RAF Panda said they tried, "You're gonna try to start meeting in September, fully on Zoom, usually following a presentation format." Luckily, not much interaction between their exec board and members is needed till later in the year, and that's even in regular, non-virtual years, so they're confident that that can be done well through breakout rooms, which they've already tested. Freshmen interest seems high enough with abnormally high numbers from last year's eighth grade orientation, so they're very excited about that, and in terms of competition, FBLA and higher-ups in that organization haven't given them any info. Now, in terms of JSA, which I'm really active in myself, numerous JSA Midwest and national conventions and workshops were held over Zoom, Zoom last spring, and I was there, and they were a great success, and throughout the summer as well. CapCon, a popular convention, just passed us this previous Saturday morning, which was great. Fall State, our biggest convention of the fall semester, will be online and not at the Madison Capitol Building, but spirits are still high for the debates and awesome keynote speakers we have lined up. JSA exec board has worked diligently to set up an Instagram account, launch a website, and send consistent updates regarding webinars, events, and overall supports all members. We had a trial meeting over Zoom with already existing members who have been in the club last week, and that was a great success, it went super smoothly. We have an official first meeting date for September 7th, and our primary debate, being a debate on resolve, the American police should be defunded. Now, in terms, and I'm gonna tie up with orchestra and fine arts in terms of the strings program, but overall, across the board, there are options, software options such as music first classroom, which I logged in and had fun with today, a cappella app, Google Classroom, and Soundtrap, and multiple other programs, if anyone's familiar with music-making programs such as Studio One and the Adobe Suite. All this stuff basically allows for that to be done in a way similar to Google Docs, where it's collaborative across a whole 70 to 100-person ensemble, so in theory, it should be working out really well. And there's talk about chamber groups, quartets, trios, octets, meeting up regularly and in person, but that's still in the works.
Okay, great job, Kayla.
Oh, I just want to first apologize, we started, sorry if you like messed up the order or something.
No, no, it's great.
No, you're good.
No, it's great, it's all great.
Okay, okay, so I'll just start now, thank you. Clubs in general, many clubs in general have made Google Classroom and Zoom links to get new students and old students involved, more specifically the following. BHG has made letters to each
You cut off. Maybe.
Kayla, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, just started the VH Give part.
Okay. BHG has made letters to each BHG leader and sent them in the mail, along with the BHG logos mask. BHG has also started planning out the year with their theme, Better Well Done Than Well Said, and the exec board has worked hard all summer.
Oh, no.
Frozen, Kayla.
Is everything good still?
Go back to Work Hard.
Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay, just take your, just take your time, it's fine, it's not your fault.
We are also planning on having some seminars to educate our community on climate change and plastic pollution for environmental love. And the exec board has worked hard all summer into the seminar planned for this week. The first day of school, so we started the day with a nationwide Zoom crash in a highly populated area. Chicagoland was hit hard. The district saw over 150 teachers quickly switch to Google Meets for their first meetings of the year. While my first day of school is an experience, if I say so myself, I started my day with a Google Meet for BHG exec board, which went smoothly. It gave me hopes that the rest of the day would run us smoothly, but that was not the case. My first-year class teacher only posted a Zoom link, which worked for everyone in the class except for me. Next, I emailed and called my counselor, was really helped, but nothing worked to actually get, to actually get me into the class. I reached out to a classmate via social media who was able to help me figure out what to do. Second period came around, and nothing worked, but another teacher suggested that I was to use a Zoom back, Zoom back on my phone. So it worked well for the rest of the day.
All right, hold on, Kayla.
Mr. Ralsky, who gave me her perspective of her first day at school. Mr. Ralsky had a similar day as I did. Um, I, her first class, second period, was not working whatsoever. She used both Google Meet and Zoom to try and, and set up a meeting, but that did not work, and she also said that there was a landscape company working at the front of her sugar house. Which is fun. Then she finally got into the Zoom late, and the breakout rooms wouldn't work. She said that Wednesday will be a perfect redo opportunity in hopes that she can get through their class activities, and that a Zoom will work. Third period came around, and she told me that she felt like she was able to actually relax and be herself, because everything went smoothly. Finally, we spoke again during the fourth period, which is both of our lunch periods, and she told me that in the beginning, she felt stressed and shaky, but it ended on a high note. Construction, construction over the period of time known as quarantine, construction of BHGS has continued to progress. A plant entering the building, door number two, has become the main entrance. In order to commemorate graduating senior class, Dr. G made a mural, mural, sorry, mural on the wall of the cafeteria with each of the graduating seniors' names, which has been painted over. Dr. G also painted the class of 2020 on the new gym additions. That too has been painted over and ready for brick. Student Eva O2 was able to view the cafeteria and said that it's much li- larger and high-end. Many students that passed by stated that they liked their new cafeteria. Construction of the cafeteria as well as dance studio is nearly finished. The catwalk from the UC to the new dance facility is complete, and the new institutional wing with
Kayla, you still there?
I'm, I was just saying, thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, hey, do me a favor, go back to the catwalk part and tell us what came after that.
Hey, the catalog from the UC, the new dance facility is complete. The new instructional wing has corridors leading all to, to all classrooms on each level. Many of the science spaces are delayed due to COVID-19 shutting down, as many of the manufacturing plants are shut down. Thank you for this opportunity, and we're all very excited to work with everyone this school year.
All right, great job, everybody, and you know, I thanked all the teachers, the administration, all the people behind the scenes trying to put all the programs together, but I also want to say a special thanks to all you students who are working so hard to make this work. And, and I know it's not easy, I know it's what, not what you planned for, but I really appreciate everything you're doing to make it work. And I know, you know, you're dedicating And, and I know, uh, you know, your dedication and commitment going forward are just critical to the success of the whole thing over the next couple of months. So thanks for everything you're doing.
We'd like to apologize as V.
I think L H S students have their reports.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I?
Asked us about our school days and we just gave you our full report and we didn't give Libertyville a chance to do that, so.
Yeah, my, no, my, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay. So who wants to start?
I think Amal's picking up at Stu Co.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. All right, last week, student council executive board, board organized and distributed spirit packs. Freshmen received their during link crew while sophomores, juniors and seniors picked theirs up during textbook pickup. Although football games aren't happening right now, we hope we can still show our school spirit through another outlet. The web store reopened to give students another chance to purchase a spirit pack. Officially, the voted homecoming theme for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one is Elva under the big top carnival theme. Day two involves Stu Co exec figures out another way to keep the tradition of unity and standing together during these times. During the past couple of weeks, students were able to come to school and to drop off and pick up their textbooks and take their yearbook picture. Students were split into groups, each given a different textbook or um, drop off slash pickup time. The fifteen minutes of being back in school, laughing the familiar hallways, seeing the security guards to greet them like before COVID. And letting kids with hope and put, put so many smiles on their faces. On August fifth and August sixth, Dr. K and other staff members hosted a webinar speaking to each grade level. During the senior webinar, webinar, students were comforted by Miss Belstra. C R C counselor about our current situation in regards to standardized testing. Many seniors recently been feeling the stress of college. Some haven't taken S A tier A C T yet, A C T test yet before and now only have one shot. And others don't feel like they have enough time to improve their score. Many are also on edge waiting to see if their test center, test center will cancel their test or not. However, many seniors were eased by what Miss Belstra had to say and were given hope by Dr. K about senior year events. Freshman orientation occurred August twentieth and August twenty-first in a safe manner. Students were split into groups by lunch periods and were able to meet their link crew members and leaders. The students met on the football field socially distanced where they were given a warm welcome to their home for the next four years. Students received their gym uniforms, Chromebooks and took their yearbook pictures before splitting into their many, mini link crew groups. Students are looking forward to begin meeting with their clubs virtually and hope to meet in person soon. Best Buddies is putting a huge emphasis on their peer buddy program where a club member is paired with another member who has a disability. Although right now their meeting will occur virtually, they are hoping each individual can meet with another individual. Of course, following protocol to keep the connection between each student. President of Best Buddies, Mia Vernasco attended, attended the virtual Best Buddies training conference over the summer. She had the chance of meeting with other presidents virtually and talked to the state about their options this year as a club. They learn about the disability, disability, civil rights movement and public speaking. Drops, drops of ink, L H S's school magazine has been very active since the beginning of summer. Senior Alan Marsden wrote a column about the political climate of the time, Black Lives Matter and protests. Recently, Doy reached out to students, teachers and community members about their reaction to the east school decision and published him on the Doy website. This upcoming school year, Doy is playing a bigger role than ever, as many students will turn to Doy for important information. There will be a huge emphasis on the job, so being website where the magazines will be, will be published and more columns will be written.
All right, nice job. Who's next?
Uh, I'm going with athletics and wellness. So Diego already talked to almost a lot of the points, but um. We know due to I just say rules, some of the sports have been postponed, but we still have some sports that are going on now. We got boys golf, cross-country, girls swimming and diving and girls tennis. These sports have been training for about two weeks and we've had a lot of success with the teams, but there's also a lot of different accommodations that we have to follow with COVID. The golf team's already had two matches and accommodations include wearing masks, unless hitting the ball. And avoiding bus rides to matches and practices. The cross-country team has also been training using, using social distancing and they have their first race this Wednesday. Meets are held with runners running spaced out and starting every fifteen seconds and all big invites are canceled, leaving just dual meets between two schools. Um, girls tennis also is their first match Wednesday and they'll play without spectators and with gloves on to avoid touching the ball directly. Girls swimming and diving competes with masks while on deck and they're in the pool, but unfortunately they have canceled all relay meets. Um, they are prohibited from using the bathrooms and locker rooms as to avoid uh, getting close with each other indoors. Additionally, sports that are transitioning to the spring from the fall. Um, are football, boys soccer and girls volleyball. And as a student athlete that participates in soccer, I'm actually pretty happy with this decision because. I'd much rather have a full and complete season in the fall than kind of a fifty fifty back in the. Full and complete season in the spring than being kind of back in the fall. Um, although we'll not have the season, many coaches are trying to find ways to connect with the players this fall. Uh, teams are allowed twenty contact days, but dates and times are still being finalized. And additionally, virtual workouts Monday through Friday are open to all student athletes at either seven AM or three forty-five PM. But led by the athletic department. Uh, N H S scheduled for August twenty-seventh has been postponed. And a virtual ceremony is being planned and announced in the next couple of weeks. And the N H S exec board is also working very hard to uh, virtualize or make or to plan their first virtual meeting. Um, on health and wellness this year is presenting new difficulties and obstacles that we have never encountered in the past. For this reason, to keep us healthy and connected, wellness events such as life of a wildcat, green dot and wellness weeks. Will all be continued throughout the year. Doctor Nelson is working very hard to connect students between grades and in a, and in a diverse population as well as she can. That's it for me.
Okay.
Hey Quinn, you might have just coined a new term. I like that virtualize. That uh, you kind of said it by accident, but I, I think you just invented the verb of the year. We're going to virtualize this, we're going to virtualize that, so good word.
Thanks.
Hey, Maryland.
And lastly, I'm going to be talking about the fine arts department. So I was able to reach out to the fine arts department and I received information about plans and concerns regarding the upcoming school year. And the teachers were able to give me so much information and I was very impressed by how much they had thought through. And I can't present all the details tonight, but I can run through some of them. So the music department received approval to continue drum line rehearsals for the fall. And although football has been moved to March and April, drum line is still used throughout the year and they have continued rehearsals as of last week. Um, they welcomed the freshmen at their orientation and they plan to begin a regular Tuesday night rehearsal. Through the end of October with proper social distancing and screening guidelines. On August eleventh, the music department also received approval to move ahead with a scaled down band camp model and preparations for performances in the spring football season. No instrument playing was done at these sessions, but they were instead focused on marching fundamentals, goal setting and social emotional development. On Thursday, non-perishable food items were collected for Libertyville area families in need through the L H S food pantry and other local food pantries. And since concerts with live audiences are not possible this semester, choir, band and orchestra performances are being designed to be broadcast or released as audio albums. And personally, as a senior in one ensemble, I know performances like the senior concerto competition winner. Means a lot to the whole band and especially the participants because they spend so long practicing throughout the year. And I hope that we can still have the competition in some way. Another big concern of band students in general is missing the connection of being in person together and making music. Since we're an ensemble, we're missing that ensemble component, so we have to come up with ways to bridge that gap. And efforts are also being made to advance extracurricular ensembles in accordance with district policies, including marching Wildcats. Jazz bands, pit orchestra, spring, string project and acapella choirs. As for art and the two D classes, art kits will be sent home, so the students will all have the supplies necessary to complete projects. And the projects are not necessarily being reduced or modified, the same approach we have used for years is the way they're going to go about teaching art in a virtual environment. There will be many in progress grades and individual critiques through breakout rooms and Zoom. And tablet will also be used to post work and to see work of other students in class. Where it gets challenging are the classes that need certain facilities, tools and supplies. For example, darkroom photography is hard to teach virtually as everyone does not have a lab for processing photographs at home. And that's where students returning to school to use the darkroom to develop and produce their photographs comes in. Uh, all the art classes need the flexibility of students to be able to come in and actually work on their own artwork in the art department studios. They also hope to offer the three D darkroom photography and gloss art students an on-campus experience in some capacity as soon as it is safely possible. Students will be given materials and tools to construct projects at home. However, this may present an inequitable situation as some students do not have the luxury of setting up a dedicated studio space to create art. And this coming week, as we meet with our art students, we hope to continue to problem solve and generate creative ideas that successfully address challenges of a remote art learning environment. For dance, the following statements have been provided by the dance instructor of L H S, Mrs. Brown. I will produce and share tutorial videos of my class content on our Google classroom as they can re-watch our combinations in the semi-synchronous setting or for extra practice after class. This allows for control over pacing and to perform as many repetitions as needed during your individual sessions. The physical welfare department has acquired an auto follow camera called a Pixim that I will use to record my videos. I will wear a sensor wristband and then the camera will track my every move, no matter where I am in the room. We will also be able to replicate the in-class performances that are a regular part of the dance curriculum. Lastly, theater for theater courses, kinetic movement and theater technique is taught primarily through acting exercises and theater games. And instead of going on field trips to Chicago Shakespeare and Northlight Theater, guest artists will be brought in to complete a masterclass and offer performance for our students via Zoom. While also using examples from recorded performances for our class critiques. Students will also be doing practical theater design units, including theatrical makeup, scenic design and making props. And for this fall, our extracurricular fall play will be written and adapted by Mr. Thomas. Who is creating a drive-through theater experience, including performances of twelve two-person scenes in the L H S parking lot where audiences will drive up to watch each progressive scene. Actors will be masked and socially distanced and each scene will be double cast so that students will tag team the performance for each new car audience. And that concludes L H S student report and I just want to say on behalf of Amal, Quinn and I, we would like to thank the board. For allowing us to participate in the back to school task force meetings this summer and for listening to our opinions in general. And we're all very excited to be working together with the board this year. Thank you.
All right, well, thanks again for, for all your hard work. It's, it's incredibly inspiring to hear your stories and, and frankly, hard to believe that schools just opened. With everything you just reported, so uh, simply amazing. All right, thank you so much for everything you guys are doing. Okay, with that said, now we can move to superintendent's report.
Ed, if it's okay, um, I'm gonna uh, just kind of continue with school reopening and then I'll pick up good news after.
Yeah.
Because I want to go to Tom and John and see if they want to make any comments on uh. Um, maybe beyond or in addition to uh, what the students had to add, so. Uh, John, um, anything to add to the students? We'll start with you and then we'll go to Tom.
Yeah, thanks Prentice. Thanks, uh, you board reps, you did a nice job there. That was a, was a great report. I, you know, they've said a lot. I think I would summarize my kind of reflections on day one in two ways. One is relieved. Uh, it just seems like so much energy, uh, resource. Uh, planning has gone into really creating new systems all across the district. So to, to get it launched, uh, and in a positive way, even with the glitch this morning with Zoom crashing on us. You know, I, I was just relieved to see it get off the ground. Uh, and then the second word I'd say is grateful. Uh, especially grateful for the support that we have got as a district, starting with you and the board as the board. But then just, you know, our I T support, our, our facility support, it's just been unbelievable. And then just grateful for the professionalism of our, our staff and teachers. Uh, I have my own daughter who I kind of picked her brain a little bit tonight, just about her experience. Uh, and I think, you know, Prentice promised uh, the community that we would do this east school. Uh, second to none, and I feel like we, we're headed in the right direction. Today was a great day. As the, the kid said, it wasn't perfect, but we knew it wouldn't be. Um, but it was, it was positive in almost every aspect that I was hoping for, uh, and so I'm just grateful. So thanks for the opportunity.
And I think it was a very uh, similar experience at Libertyville. Um, we had a, quite a few teachers in the building today. Um, and I was able to walk around and check in with many of them. And overwhelmingly to a person, they were, they were very positive and excited. Felt um, that, you know, you cannot underestimate. How important those last two weeks of staff development and staff learning were. Um, the, the support by the board to um, help us make that happen is. Going to be something that I think uh, when we are as successful as we will be with east school, we're. We're going to point to those two weeks and say that was really one of the critical factors. Um, because it was such a unifying, awesome week, at two weeks of learning where it wasn't just Libertyville staff in one building and Vernon Hill staff in the other. It was the whole district coming together for these really just outstanding um, learning experiences and dialogue and discussion. And I think that's why today, when Zoom hit the ground and you know, was like, of course, we're, we're coming into school and we're finding out about this. Massive outage on the very first day, like, you know, there, there was a little bit of panic. But there was also an ability for everybody to be nimble and pivot. And part of that was because they were, they were prepared and trained in different platforms and different ways of doing this. Um, and you know, it just shows that um, our staff, when given the time, the resources. Will take it very seriously, will work on their skills and be ready to bring it for the students, uh, no matter what happens. The other thing I would add is I, I am very proud like John is of our start. Um, but I think we are all feeling that um, there is just a mountain of unanswered questions in front of us. You know, it is, and you as a board are feeling those too, right? There, we are taking our entire school system. And as Quinn said, we're virtualizing it. And you know, we've done an intensive focus on these, on the classroom, which is where our focus needed to be. But we also, you know, now have to turn our attention to all the other aspects of the school that families depend on and that students depend on. And so um, we're going to start tackling those things and we're going to start working through it. And um, I can get overwhelmed by the thought of all of this as a principal, but I think there's two things that I'm, that are. It inspiring me and, and, and kind of motivating me and I think you as a board should be aware of that. And the first is like you heard the, in the student reports, so many of the teachers were saying to the kids. Hey, let's work together on this. Let's try to figure this out together. And, and I think that's really awesome that there's this collaborative sense between parents and students and staff and administration and the board. To say, we're all in this same, you know, situation. Um, none of us have been here before, none of us have the answers, so let's really partner with one another and look for good ideas wherever they come from. And the other thing that I think was happening towards the end of last week. Was not only were we looking to solve problems to get us back to how we can do, you know, good quality instruction. But a lot of the staff has started to really think about, how is this an opportunity to truly innovate? And redesign schools so that when we come back to school in. You know, in person and on campus, we've um, developed some new systems and we've pushed some systems forward. That are ultimately going to be beneficial for students in ways uh, that we weren't able to do before or that we just didn't have the time to innovate on before. Um, and I've talked about that a few times this summer, but I saw a real. Kind of spark in people's eyes and a real kind of understanding like, hey, not only are we creating this model. Um, for now, for the short term, but some of this stuff we're doing, this could be really good for a long time to come. And I'm excited to see how that unfolds moving forward. We're going to have our challenges. There's going to be a lot of ups and downs with this. Uh, but with the attitude of our students and the tenacity of our staff, I know we're going to get through it.
Great, thanks, Tom.
Okay, uh, well, I'll just add a few things to this and then we'll move back um, into uh, good news and we'll move through my report. Um, I want to start by adding my thanks uh, to uh, several um, folks and groups of folks. First, starting with the board, um, you've heard tonight, uh, you've also received a few emails from teachers. Uh, and we've received many more that weren't sent directly to you. Um, that expressed their appreciation and the importance of the two weeks of preparation time. And what it's, what's really important to be underscored here is the teaching and learning that went on during that period of time. Was with and among our own staff members. Okay, we had trainers of trainers, we had our own staff teaching and sharing with other staff members. It was very, very powerful. But I think what you've heard consistently from the staff that that second week really made a difference. When our teachers, who have teachers as friends uh, in other districts, um, compared notes. Uh, they really felt that second week was very um, important and very powerful for us to be ready uh, to hit the ground running this.
They really felt that second week was very important and very powerful for us to be ready to hit the ground running this morning. So we want to thank the board for their willingness to provide that two weeks and then know that our staff not only used that very effectively, but they valued that and really felt that that helped them be prepared for this morning when the students return. I want to thank the administrators, the district leadership team, Tom and John and their building teams as well. Tom hit on this a little bit, but and Pat heard me say this on opening day. We are recreating 120 years of built upon knowledge in terms of opening and conducting public schools in this country. And we did that virtually over the summer. And so the work that the leadership teams here have done has been nothing short of extraordinary. It's been a lot of six and seven-day weeks, a lot of 12 and 14-hour days that, you know, we gladly did work to prepare for this day moving forward, but leadership matters. And that has never been more underscored than it has been over the past several weeks of the summer. So thanks to the leadership team. In the district, of course, our teachers and support staff, if you already heard, have really done an incredible job. And they've really taken to and exhibited a can-do attitude during this and also expressing that we've got this to the students and working with the students. And everything is about context and inflection and how people choose to deal with a very challenging situation. And we're very proud of our teachers and our support staff. And then, of course, we want to thank our parents and our amazing students for their patience as we work through this process to, you know, get to the point, you know, that we're at right now. So, you know, with that, I'm going to repeat again what I've said on July 22nd. And that is by the end of the year, we will be at the apex of high schools in this country that do remote learning. And we're well on our way to the path because that's who we are as a district. And that's embodied by our collective staff in the district. So we're really excited about jumping off. And it will require patience, as Tom has indicated. And I think, John, there are going to be questions that we have to answer as we go. We'll answer those questions. We'll apply that to what we're doing and we'll get better at what we're doing every single day through the course of the school year. So thanks to everyone for that. Okay, good news. This summer, LHS students competed in the virtual National FBLA Conference. Team member Desi Nainer placed fifth in business calculations. The team is coached by Loretta O'Day and Kevin Gurrell. LHS chemistry teacher Sherry Rooks was one of 53 individuals honored by the American Chemical Society as being named to the 2020 Class of ACS Fellows. Created by the ACS Board of Directors in December 2008. The Fellow of the American Chemical Society designation is awarded to members who in some capacity have made exceptional contributions to the science or profession and have provided excellent volunteer service to the ACS community. And the LHS Wildcats, Marching Wildcats, hosted its annual band camp. I think one of the students mentioned that earlier. Students collected over 700 food donations to fill the LHS food pantry. In addition, the drum line performed for freshman orientation and demonstrated to true Wildcat pride. So congratulations and thanks to everyone. And now for capital projects update, I'm going to turn it over to Dan and Mark. Or Mark and Dan, who's ever going to go first here?
Okay, I will go first. On our summer capital projects, we still have some ongoing work at LHS. We're finishing up the top pointing project and we're finishing up on the roofing. Our tennis courts were delayed. We inspected the service, the surface, and we were not happy with the finish of the tennis courts. Unfortunately, when the subcontractor put in the posts for the tennis nets, they had a hard tire piece of equipment that left marks and grooves in the surface. So they tried one method to eliminate them. They got them, for the most part, covered up, but we still weren't happy with the with the finish. So they started another process today. I inspected the first coat. It seems to be working well. We'll be installing another coat and weather permitting, and we should have the tennis courts open, ready for play for our tennis team, the girls tennis on Monday, the 31st. We gave that deadline to the contractor. VHHS, our summer carpeting project has been delayed for replacing the carpet due to the construction delays. So we're working. We obviously don't want to install the carpet too soon since brand new carpet, we don't want it ruined. So we're working to get that all done in conjunction with the addition. The work's going on, the new construction over there at Vernon Hills. At Vernon Hills, the classroom addition has moved along. We've got furniture in in some of the classrooms. Carpeting is down. They're doing some finishing touches. We have a major delay. We just got, we're informed again that the delay in the science classrooms would be the two science classrooms in the STEM lab. We're not expecting the materials till close to the end of October. So we'll be delayed in finishing those classrooms. We will be, for the whole project, we will be walking through with the ROE on September 10th as part of our annual life safety inspection. And at that point, we will be looking to be granted temporary occupancy on the construction site to use classrooms that are available and anything that's completed, including the cafeteria. So in Area B, the cafeteria equipment is installed. There's a couple of pieces of equipment. We're waiting for some additional parts. The flooring down in the in the new eating area is completed. Next step would be the carpet and the foyer in in those spaces. But the pattern, the floor looks fantastic. Can't wait till you guys are able to walk through the building and get a glimpse of it. So that's moving along. And then the gym and dance studio is moving forward. They're working on vapor barrier on the outside, finishing up the roof, doing the HVAC, doing mechanicals and stuff inside the building. And moving forward with that, and we're looking at the same completion, you know, substantial completion in October in in that area. One last note is the village has started their water main, water main project on Route 176. So they started, they gave us the initial schedule. So they've already closed down Dawes as of today, and they will be saw cutting and preparing the surface. So our main entrance at Libertyville High School will be intermittently closed over the next two weeks as they do the work there at Dawes. Then they're going to move to the west. The project will end down at Diamond. So they will do directional boring and move along the front of the high school property. At no time will both entrances on Route 176 be closed. So once we're done at the main entrance, they'll move to the west and temporarily close from time to time the new pool entrance to the west. We've opened up the gate through the east parking lot by tennis courts. So staff is able to use that during the day. Staff and any students that come to the campus. And that completes my report on construction.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Mark, just one quick question. What materials were delayed on the STEM and science labs?
Would be all the cabinets, the cabinetry and the countertops. And in STEM labs and the sciences.
From COVID.
COVID, COVID-related delays, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we had five FOIA requests and as required, I'll read those into the record. This FOIA was received on 7/28. The response deadline was 8/4. Requester Eric Chung, data acquisition specialist, Smart Procure. Information requested, Smart Procure submitting a public records request to the Adams Spec School District 128 for all current employee staff contact information. The request is limited to readily available records without physically copying, scanning, or printing paper documents. Any editable electronic document is acceptable. Specific information requested for your record-keeping system is first name, last name, position title, department, direct phone number. If does not exist, less main phone number with extension, business cell phone if provided by, let's keep saying Adams Special School District 128, email address, office address, address, city, state, and zip. Follow-up is done by Carol Skodin. No responsive records, response sent 8/320. FOIA requested on 7/28, deadline response 8/4. Requester Steven T. Duplane, 400 Corporate Point Suite, Culver City, California. Information requested, this is an official request under the Illinois Freedom of Information Act for the names, corresponding job titles, email addresses, and the most current and readily available salary information of all teachers and administrators employed at CHSD 128 as of the date of this request. Follow-up was done by Carol Skodin. Request was fulfilled and response sent on 8/320. FOIA requested 7/17. Commercial response deadline was 8/17. Kevin Deloian, data acquisition specialist, Smart Procure. Smart Procure submitting a commercial FOIA request to the Libertyville Vernon Hills Community High School District 128 for any and all purchasing records from 12/30 to 2019 to current. Request is limited to readily available records without physically copying, scanning, or printing paper documents. Any editable electronic document is acceptable. The specific information requested from your record-keeping system is one purchase order number. If purchase orders are not used, a comparable substitute is acceptable. Two purchase date, three line item details, detailed description of the purchase, four line item quantity, five line item price, six vendor ID, number, name, address, contact person and their email address. Follow-up is done by Dan Stanley and Rose DeSeco. Request fulfilled and response sent on 8/6/2020. Time spent approximately one hour. FOIA request received on 8/12, deadline 8/19, from Carolina Wechek in Chicago. Information requested, please confirm that Vernon Hills High School is assigned to 226 US Highway 45, Indian Creek, Illinois 60061. Follow-up is done by Carol Skodin. Request was fulfilled and response was sent on 8/14. FOIA request received 8/12, response deadline 8/19 from CBS Chicago, Michelle Youngerman, investigative producer, 222 West Washington Street in Chicago. I'm requesting statistical staffing information related to district employees either temporarily or permanently choosing to not return to school for any or all of the 2021, 2021 school year. More specifically, please provide the name, the number of employees by category, i.e. teacher assistant, teacher, substitute teacher, secretary, et cetera, along with their status or reason, i.e. opt-out, resigned, retired, medical leave for loan, et cetera, for not returning during any or all of the 2020, 2021 school year. For example, 10 teachers on medical leave, 12 substitutes opt-out, two secretaries resigned, et cetera. Please also provide the total number of substitute teachers available and ready to work as you begin this school year. Follow-up request was received on 8/20 or 8/12. New clarification, apologies, but to be clear, this should also include the statistical breakdown of those employees who plan to opt-out or not be at school for any other reasons coming year if school is going to have any in-person classes. Follow-up is done by Brian Kelly. Request was fulfilled and response was sent on 8/19/2020. And just a couple of other things. Let me start with community education because we had a public comment on that earlier and Pat may mention that again. We have a full adult ongoing communication education program in this district. We partner with Stevenson and other districts in the area to provide those classes. Those classes are generally very small in number. They will number. Anybody who's using our facilities or facilities that may be out in the community will be required to appropriate PPE, temperature check, space mask, et cetera, social distancing. So those classes will continue as we move into the semester. And again, we have no concerns because the the controlled size of those classes. Secondly, just to follow up on something that we've talked about to the board, I think on July 10th and then on the 22nd, the night we made the decision and that we talked about in every meeting since then, that we are continuing to move forward with our planning for bringing smaller groups of students back to the district as we're able to do that. As has been noted this evening already, we have athletics, drum line, driver's education has already started. Both schools did freshman orientation. School supply pickup and exchanges and the SAT national test will be held at Vernon Hills upcoming. In addition to that, in future weeks, we'll be looking at groups of English learners, lifeguarding, career tech education classes for select courses, supervised e-school workspaces, LST social emotional support groups, pos, fine arts, curricular and extracurricular. And then as we continue to move forward, testing programs, SAT and ACT for students, special education academic support, academic and regimen experiences as senior class, college post-secondary planning. So although our planning isn't finalized on that, we've broken those down into groups. We generally have them in timelines right now. We've got a little bit more work to do on that, but we will continue to move forward as we're able to do in terms of bringing smaller groups back in. And finally, tonight, over a period of a couple of weeks, the board and the administration was asked several questions around driver's education, physical welfare, or physical education, what we call physical welfare questions. And we posed some of those questions to council. We knew the answers to them, but we wanted to be clear that we had council look at them too. The first question revolved around the fact that the governor issued an executive order last spring which would waive or suspend the PE requirement for 2020. That was to make sure that seniors were not denied graduation for not being able to finish a PE class, particularly in school districts that did not have the wherewithal to be able to do remote learning. And there were a number of those. The governor extended that order through August 22nd in order to pick up summer school kids. Therefore, the suspension and the PE requirement does not apply for the 2020, 2021 school year. Secondly, there was a question that revolved around the number of PE classes that students had to take over for years that students should be required to take physical welfare-defined physical education class in addition to driver's education and health. So for example, in the sophomore year, the position posited was that you would have to take driver's ed and a physical education class that semester, or you would have to take health as a freshman and a physical education class. As a number of high schools doing the Chicago area, physical education, physical welfare department includes driver's ed and health. So they count as PE classes. And there's nothing in the school code that precludes a school from counting driver's education as their PE class in the semester that they take that. Number of schools do that. And we also do that as well. The third question revolved around, I think, you know, possibly more of an assertion that our district is allowing students to opt-out of physical education in lieu of athletics in grades 10 through 12, and it should only be grades 11 through 12. So just let me read something for you that's covered in the Illinois School Code. The school board is authorized to excuse pupils enrolled in grades 11 and 12 from engaging in physical education courses if those pupils request to be. if those pupils request to be excused for any of the following reasons. One, ongoing participation in interscholastic athletic program. A school board may also, on a case-by-case basis, excuse pupils in grades seven through twelve who participate in an interscholastic or extracurricular athletic program from engaging in physical education courses. In our practice in this district, per this policy has been to allow tenth graders to apply for a PE waiver only during the season that they are participating in sports. So, school code allows for that and lines up with our policy. So those are the answers to the three physical education questions that have been posed to the board and administration over the last few weeks. And Pat, believe it or not, I think that concludes the superintendent's report tonight.
Okay, thanks. Great job. All right, next is the approval of the consent vote agenda, which is listed. Again, we reviewed this earlier in the month. If I could have a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed, please.
I move to approve the consent vote agenda.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, if not, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And actually, I forgot to do this before we did it. For all the students, the rest of the meeting is very routine. Probably, first of all, you are welcome to stay for any and all of it. But this is also the part of the meeting that you're also welcome to say you have more important and pressing things to do with respect to homework or whatever other things you gotta do. So if you want to stay, you're welcome to, but if you want to sign off, you're more than welcome to do that as well, okay? And again, thanks for all your great contributions tonight. Okay, next, program and personnel committee chairperson Batson.
Okay, Dr. Grudy, thank you. We have, the first on the agenda is the second reading and adoption for a group of board policies, a group of six board policies. These have been reviewed twice in committee and reviewed last month at the board meeting for a first reading. So we have these board policies. Can we have a motion, please?
I move to adopt the board policies after the second reading as listed.
Second.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments? I think we've seen these quite a few times, so roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Our second item on the program and personnel agenda is employment of employees. We have one administrative staff annual revised contract. I think it's self-explanatory, but can we have a motion, please?
I motion to accept the employment of the employee as listed.
Second.
Any further questions, discussion?
Can we just get clarification? What was the revision to the contract?
Yes, so her original contract when it was made, she was at, so our team leaders are paid off of the teacher salary schedule. So she was at Masters plus thirty, and she moved over this summer to Masters plus forty-five. So
Okay, okay.
We had to revise her contract.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Is there anything anyone has for other under the PMP? Okay, hearing done. I will pass it back to you, Dr. Grudy.
Okay, thank you. Facilities and Finance Chairperson Huber.
All right, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Dan. I think we got some spending per pupil to go over.
Yes. Do you have, do you guys, can you guys see that site-based reporting reports in your packet?
It's a two-pager?
Yes, I'm trying to scroll. Find the right one.
I think Carol got it out there for us. It's a two-pager.
Yeah, it's a
One-page.
Right, yeah, okay, I forgot. I wrote a cover memo. So so every year, for the last two years, the national federal law, Every Student Succeeds Act, that was, that was the law that replaced No Child Left Behind. And part of that was the requirement for school districts to report. So school districts have always reported their expenditures as a per pupil operating expenditure. But we've never had, we've never been, we've never been required to do that per school. It's always been on a district level. So if you have one school, it's pretty self-explanatory, but if you have multiple schools in your district, it's not always clear how much you spend per kid. So, for instance, if you spend twenty thousand dollars on average, maybe you spend forty thousand at one school and then well, I guess zero technically the other one, but you get what I mean. So we have to report our expenditures on a per site. So it's for us, it's the two high schools. And so, you know, we use our general, our ledger for our expenditures and is be as well aware that none of this is audited. All of this is just taken from our GL and is you know, not going to be necessarily audit accurate, but it's going to give you a sense of what's happening. So last year, we reported that for the first time based on fiscal year nineteen. Now, we have to report that based on fiscal year twenty. And so, you know, I plug those numbers in and I see what the math generates out, and then I look at that, and then I try to understand what the difference is. You're probably never going to be exact, but I think it's helpful to understand where it's different. So we had a difference last year. We explained that. Now we have a difference this year to explain. So we had twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars at LHS per student and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars per student at Vernon Hills. So that's a five hundred and thirty-dollar per difference. Now, last year, we had a four hundred dollar, it was four hundred dollars higher at Vernon Hills than it was at LHS per student. Now it's, now it's swung the other way. So what is going into this? So when I break down our expenditures and look at the differences per kid, I look at the areas and find where I see significant differences, and these are the three areas really that I see that go into why we are different. So the first difference that makes up about fifty, fifty-seven dollars per kid is substitute teachers. Before the pandemic hit, we just had more subs at LHS than we did at Vernon Hills. And also, LHS had, before the pandemic hit, because once the pandemic hit, kind of everything, a lot of things really shut down in terms of purchases. At that point in the year, LHS had purchased more supplies and equipment per kid than Vernon Hills did. And then the other different, the rest of it, which is really the biggest difference is the teachers' salary and benefits. So I started looking in, I started, you know, digging into some of those details because that was not a difference that really presented itself last year. But it is something that is sticking out this year. And so what I was able to deduce from looking at it and trying to compare is the LHS staff overall is older and more experienced than the staff on average at Vernon Hills. So if you look at the average age of the teachers, they're forty-four at LHS, forty-one at Vernon Hills, which is not a big difference, but it's part of, it's part of the reason why, it's mathematically part of the reason why they're different. For example, the percentage of teachers that are either on longevity or the retirement track, which goes to a little bit more of experience in the district, thirty-nine percent of the teachers at LHS are in that category versus thirty-three percent at Vernon Hills. And a third example of that is looking at lanes. So if you take the percentage of teachers that are equal than or greater than, equal to or greater than, greater than or equal to, sorry, if I'm saying it backwards, a lane that's a Masters fifteen or higher, seventy-four percent of the staff at LHS are at or above the MA fifteen versus fifty-three percent at Vernon Hills. So that is, that, those numbers, the longevity, the lane change, all this stuff goes into the salaries of those teachers. And that is why it's higher. It is not because there is something off between like teachers per kids. Those were almost dead-on, and that, again, speaks to, you know, the staffing process we go to. It was, it's extremely comparable, but it's just the salaries of those that end up getting paid there. So, you know, you have a fair number of new teachers at Vernon Hills. For instance, you could, and especially when you have, like, for example, counselors, there's a big difference in the, essentially, the, the the salaries of the counselors at Vernon Hills versus LHS because we got some new ones, you know, versus others retired. So those are really the differences that I'm seeing in, that go into that five hundred dollar difference. So that's the site-based reporting. It's nothing you have to approve on or anything, but it is something that we have to publicly report that is part of our report card as well as the narrative that goes with that. So it figured it's always better for you to be aware of what's going on. So that's what I have for that.
Dan, just one question. What, any, any thoughts on why we have twice as many subs at LHS? When we have about twenty percent difference in students, maybe?
No, well, it's a, it's a per, so that, yeah. Why we had more subs, I don't know that I could tell you that right now. I don't know. And I didn't, I didn't really ask Brian for why the more subs. It could be a variety of reasons, you know, it could be related to people on different leaves or whatever. I don't know, and I don't want to speculate without having that data. So
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that answer. Okay.
Other questions for Dan? Yeah, I do have that one question. So that relationship of the teacher salaries, four forty-six, that had to be probably consistent, that, like, that didn't change year over year. So I would suspect if I looked at this last year, it would have been about the same, but you said Vernon Hills actually was higher than Libertyville last year by a lot. Like, didn't you say like four or five hundred bucks?
It was, and when, you have to take the dollars that you actually spend and then divide it by the number of kids. Last year, based on the number of kids at each school, it did not stick out to me, the experience of the, the, the teacher salary difference. What stuck out, stood out to me was the building administration, like we talked about, you know, the, you have the same number of principal for, or the same, you have like one principal, for example, for the, you know, fifteen hundred kids versus nineteen hundred kids as an example. So your dollar per, your, your principal dollars per kid is higher at that building. That stood out of the data last year. This year, that did not stick out of the data, probably because LHS was down a little bit and Vernon Hills was up a little bit. And so that, that dollar difference did not stick out like it did last year. So I, you know, without, without like probably digging into it a whole lot more, that's, that's all I can tell you is in terms of, when I looked at the per-dollar differences in all of our functions and objects and stuff like that, that did not stick out last year, but it does, it does this year.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine. These differences are, again, it's, I'm sure they're going to fluctuate based upon as Vernon Hills gets more kids, it's going to be a more interesting analysis. The final question I have on this one is how does it compare? We do present a schedule in the CAFR every year. It actually has per pupil spending. Is this, I think it should be, if I remember right, I last looked at it a couple of years ago, but I thought we were in the twenty-two, twenty-three range, so this doesn't seem out of that. Did that go up? I haven't looked at it for a year.
We're about twenty-three range, but it, in theory, would go up. I mean, if you're spending more the year before, it'll go up a little bit. But that calculation, like, they don't take the, the exact same numbers into account. So there are things excluded from this, for example. We don't count the, the thirty million dollar additions that we're doing at Vernon Hills. Like, we, we don't, that's not part of the calculation because it's apples and oranges. So each calculation takes out and includes a few different things than the other, so they don't use the exact same. It's a little bit apples to oranges, but yeah, we're in that twenty-three to twenty-four thousand dollar range.
Okay, great. That's cool. Thank you. All right, any other questions on this report? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to the CARES Act. You want to, I think it's CARES Act next, Kiss?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. CARES Act.
So with the CARES Act, there is money that we believe that we might have access to through the state that I'm working on. But in addition, there is money, I mentioned earlier in the budget hearing, that the Lake County Board, so the county government board has decided, I, I'm honestly not sure if they're required to. I'm guessing they're not required to, but I could be wrong. They are sharing some of the CARES Act money that they received at the county level. They're sharing that with the taxing districts and school districts. And so they have allocated the money on a per student basis, and so we we have access to a very specific amount of money. Carol, do you remember it was a hundred and four?
One oh four zero zero six or something like that. It was
Like a hundred and four thousand.
Hundred and four thousand.
Yeah, that we can get reimbursed for. And so what the county is asking in order for us to access that money, so for example, the money through the state, like, the board doesn't have to do anything. We can just apply for it. But this, they're asking for an intergovernmental agreement, and that's the thing that really the board has to enter into. And so that's why this is really here for you, for you to approve, and I didn't have it before. But, but I do have it now. Our attorney reviewed it, said there's nothing wrong with this. And so our intention would be, is that we would submit for reimbursement to thermal scanners that we spent. That was about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars that we would use towards this. And I think the one stipulation is you can't double-dip, meaning I couldn't get reimbursed for this and then also ask the state to reimburse me for the thermal scanners too. You know what I mean? You have to keep them separate. So that, that would be my plan for, for this money. So I think it's great. It's cool. It seems pretty straightforward. And yeah, honestly, I was, I was very surprised, pleasantly surprised to hear this. This is, I think, a really cool thing. So.
All right, other questions for Dan regarding the intergovernmental agreement between Lake County and one-twenty-eight? All right, seeing none, I may have a motion to accept the intergovernmental agreement as presented between Lake County and Community High School District one-twenty-eight.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, Carol.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
All right, thank you for that. It looks like we're going to start doing some turf in the softball field finally. Is this the, is this the next topic, Dan?
I believe so, yes. Mark?
All right, Mark.
Okay. Yes, this is, the next topic is, this is a source wall bid contract, so that, this is we've used it in the past, as we call it a co-op. They're part of a co-op, and the prices are bid nationally. And that, since they're bid nationally, it allows us to, to use that pricing to purchase materials and service. We did, we've used the field turf product in the same way we did Brainerd. And when we did the, replaced the varsity field at the stadium at Libertyville a few years ago, we used the same process as, as this going through co-op. So we have a total cost for the synthetic turf, final grading and installation for the project, a hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And the product is field turf.
And forgive me, you might have mentioned this, but there's also site work that would have to happen that is in addition that we're, we're still working on. This is just to provide the turf. So this is not the cost of the whole project.
That was my, that was my question. What do we, what do we estimate the total cost of the project will be?
It was like three thirty?
Three, I think it was three sixty-one, if I remember. Let me pull it up right now.
It was closer to three fifty, Dan, I think.
Yeah, I believe it was three sixty-one was our estimated cost for the whole project. So we're looking to approve this now so we get it in the queue for production. As a sidebar, an update on the project itself, we had a pre-bidding, pre-bid meeting last Thursday. We had 10 contractors show up, so we are looking for very competitive bidding. We will have a bid opening on September 8th. And then we will bring it for board approval for the site work and all that at your special board meeting on the 14th of September.
And Mark, I know we've talked about this. I feel like we've been talking about this for a long time and at one point did decide to put it off. Could you just review why this needs to be done?
We've been having, over the years, it's been the same issue that they had with the boys' baseball field. Even though it is up in a higher part of the property. It just does not drain. It's also shadowed by the, the stadium bleachers. So we actually don't get sun on the softball field to dry it out till about midday. So there's been, we spent a lot of time and effort trying to, to make the field playable. And we have to cancel a lot of things or, you know, spend some extra money trying to make the field playable to get the games in. So this is a solution for the drainage issue and the things that, the site conditions that we have there.
So that site work is going to address the drainage issue? And then to replace the old turf that's been there for about how long?
Well, this is a clay, it's a clay infield. It's not, there's not a turf there now. The base, the baseball field was, had the same issues and they put a turf infield in there several years ago, it was before I came to the district. So about 10 years ago, eight to 10 years ago.
Thank you. Wanted to be sure we resummarized. Thanks.
Just, and just a little brief history lesson on that. So in the spring, we, way back in probably February or so is when we presented this list. And as we progressed in the spring a little bit, it did come up at one of our meetings to talk about, like, you know, with everything going on, like, is this really? Is this, what are projects, are there projects that we should be putting on hold? Is this really a project that we should consider? And at that time, I, I would say what I said then as well, that, that there would be many, many other places that I would pause or slow down before I would do this. This, this project was by and far away the most, the top priority project at Vernon Hills. Bigger than any other request for projects done. And so I, I would say the same thing I said then is, is this would not be a project that I would recommend us slowing down on. There's many other places that if we wanted to hold off on something, I, I would suggest we do that before we would look at affecting this project, so.
Part of the, part of the long view history, Lisa, to your question, is when they built Vernon Hills, they had to make some reductions. Because they ran out of money with the referendum, which often happens. So the cafeteria is the size it is. That was a reduction. One of the external buildings that could have been added, the second gym, was not done and there was no drainage put up on the athletic field. So that price has been paid over a period of time. As folks have talked about with inability to play contests in the spring, particularly coming out of a bad winter and wet spring. So that's just a maybe a little broader history in that particular area.
All right, other questions regarding the, a portion, I should say, of the Vernon Hill softball, high school softball field? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the contract for the artificial turf as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. Carol, you want to call it?
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
All right, so that one passes. I look forward to seeing the other $244,000 coming later on. Disposal of IT equipment or of equipment, really IT, I think that was a 76 pager. That could have been one of the bigger ones I've seen. Dan?
Yeah, so Mick likes to do this a few times a year, and with the pandemic hitting, he did not do it during one of his times. So he's got that much more to dispose of this time. So it is, it is a very large disposal, which he is aware of, and he is very excited to dispose of these items. So, yeah, this is, yeah, this is that list. I believe this is a group that we've used before last time. So, yeah, this, this did not, we did not have this for the committee meeting. So that's why it's on here now. We, so we did not have this at committee, but we have it now, so.
All right, anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. About 25 of those pages in that document were the certificates showing that they were compliant with EPA regulations for disposal, and I was pleased to see that.
I think Mick, I think Mick tries to take that very seriously, you know, and, and so he, he, I think he does a great job of trying to make sure all that stuff is done carefully.
And if I could just also mention, I really appreciated the detail, even though it was 76 pages to go through. The summary of his report did verify that none of that could be donated as we have done in the past several times and in the recent past. I know that Mick would have done that if any of this was usable, which the report details. The equipment was not.
Yeah, thank you for saying that, Lisa. That's true. Very true. Other, other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, can we have board approval to scrap the equipment from the attached inventory list as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Jim. All right, Carol?
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
All right, that one went through. Do we have any other for the facilities and finance for our Mr. Stanley or anybody else? Mark, press, oh, okay, Pat, back to you. Thanks.
Okay, I believe that is everything, correct? No seat all, no ISP, right? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Grudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. That's it. Good night, everybody. Thanks, thanks.
Good night, everybody.